All the meeting in order, roll call please, Jerry.
Legislator Brennan has been excused, Shartrun.
Here.
Bellhoff.
Here.
Legislator Fossett has been excused, Hathaway.
Here.
King.
Here.
Coulter.
Here.
Marahan.
Here.
Legislator Moser has been excused, Tabor.
Here. Everyone please rise and meet the question. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessing upon the budget that has been prepared. We trust it is fair and hope that it solves the basic problems of our community. We pray for all the trouble that's going on in our world and pray that people will start giving respect to our maker and pray that an end to all the commotion and violence that goes on in our country and the world. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge to the flag.
Pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report for rules and legislation committee for rule six. Motion by Larry.
Would you like to make motion to read the rules for law action on Lakeview? Second.
Second by Dick, column favors Aye.
Aye.
Foes, Gary. Now at this time we'll open public hearing for comments on number one, our tentative 2018 county budget. Number two is a local dog, local law overriding the tax levy limit established by municipal law section three for the Lewis County budget. And number three to grant a waiver for a conflict of interest between Snowbell Housing, Vice Chairman and eligible VA grant recipient. Now, does anyone from the public have any comment at this time regarding any of the three topics? Cheryl?
Aye. Thank you. Snowbell Housing administers a community development block grant on behalf of Lewis County, as you know. The program provides housing rehabilitation grants to income eligible county residents to complete necessary repairs to their homes. The program is open to anyone who owns and occupies their home and meets the income requirements. The daughter of Snowbell Housing's vice chairman applied for the grant program and because Snowbell is the sub-recipient for the county, there is a perceived conflict of interest as Snowbell assists this household. If Snowbell wishes to assist the household, it must request a waiver of the perceived conflict of interest from the Office of Community Renewal at the state. The assistance to be proposed to be provided to the household is consistent with funding provided to other households in similar circumstances. The proposed rehabilitation includes window and door replacement, placement of plumbing lines, electrical upgrade, flooring and some interior repairs, lead-based paint film stabilization and replacement of the deck and railing for a total cost of $33,525. The bids were reviewed by Snowbell Housing's project committee on Thursday, November 16th, and approved by the Snowbell Housing Board of Directors. Dennis Mastacusa abstained from any discussion on this project and also abstained for the voting on the project. The Snowbell Board voted to approve assistance to the household pending the waiver, pending the grant of the waiver of the conflict.
Could you say again what was going to be repaired?
Um, yep.
I didn't catch all of it.
Yep. Window door replacement, placement of plumbing lines, electrical upgrade, flooring and interior repairs, lead-based paint film stabilization, which is basically painting of the house and...
Inside or outside?
Pardon?
Painting.
Paint film stabilization.
Painting the house inside or outside?
Outside, outside. Yeah, it has deteriorated paint on the outside and we have to repaint it as a result of that. And replacement of the deck and railing. So it's pretty typical repairs.
You're coming to us, so I assume you're, you would care to do this rehab.
Pardon?
Is it safe to assume you would recommend that we do this rehab?
Well, yeah, I mean, they're, they are an income eligible household. The house needs work and the only reason we can't help her is because her dad's on our, on our board, Vice Chairman of our Board.
So if he hadn't been on the board, it's been a no-brainer for you?
Right, exactly, exactly. And we run into this before. The community development block grant, it's federal money, so anytime we, we assist a household, if we were doing a grant, say, in the village of Lions Falls, and somebody who was related to a Board member or related to Snowbell because we're administering the money, there was that perception that there would be a conflict. And we've had to do this, we've had to do this in the past with, in other communities if, if there's somebody in the local community. And in some communities, in the town of Martinsburg, the town of Pickney, it gets really difficult to try and assist somebody who's not related to somebody.
Right.
So that's basically what we're, what we're looking at here. It's because they're eligible, if they weren't related to somebody on our Board, it wouldn't be a no-brainer.
So this is not your first rodeo with this getting approval?
Right, right. Yeah.
As I understood, the selection criteria for this was the same selection criteria that was used for everybody else that applied for the grant?
Correct, correct. The only, on our application, when somebody applies and we ask on our application if anybody is related to any, anybody who is on the Board at Snowbell or anybody who's related to anybody at a municipality or county. And they did disclose that upfront, so we did have them complete the waiver form, so we disclosed it. You know, we're not trying to hide, hide anything. We're not trying to give somebody something they're not entitled to or anything else as a result of the program. Yeah.
Any other questions for Cheryl?
Mr. Chairman, I can, I can just also relay that I reviewed all the documents that Snowbell has prepared. In fact, the forms that they give to any of the proposed grant recipients, they actually use from the office, from OCA, from the Office of Community Renewal, the actual forms that they suggest that are used. So they've done everything to the letter. And again, because this is really a grant that came to the county, the county and this Board are the ones who have to approve making the request for the, for the waiver to the state. And so we will be making that application if the Board finds that the waiver is appropriate.
Very good. Jerry?
Do have one question. So even with them reducing themselves and not voting stuff, we still have to take it one step farther and get a grant a waiver?
From the state.
From the state on our behalf?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Got a question for Cheryl? Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you, Cheryl.
Hey, does anyone from the public have any comments regarding your other subjects, our budget?
I do about, I do, in terms of wanting to speak to the Board about my request for a position, I don't know when you want...
This is probably where you come in there.
Okay.
Oh, your ears closed.
He's a joker. I was gonna say, I was pretty sure all of you would be super excited to see me stand up here, so. I know my committee, I think, has, oh, thanks Steve. It's been a good day, good day for photos.
I get your good side.
Yeah, it's been a good day for photos.
Yeah, so I heard.
Yeah, it's not been a good day for photos. I know that I've talked, I don't know, it's probably not the last, every single month for, I don't know how many months, for the Courts and Law Committee about a lot of different subjects, but consistently, and I think I said like a broken record to, in particular, the subject of a new ADA. So I don't know how much information you have gotten over the course of the time in terms of whether or not you want anything additional. I will present you with some information. It is a request that I'm presenting. I know that I have spoken at length with Patricia and Ryan in terms of that. I know that the presented budget does not contain any new positions. I am still coming to you asking for your consideration for that for a new position beginning in 2018. This year in particular, and I don't expect the trend to end, which is sad in and of itself, we are beyond overwhelmed. I've had a conversation again with Ryan today. He did indicate, and I don't know if you have, my apologies for being a little late, I was dealing with situations, is that he will or has already told you that there may be a little bit more cushion this year, and we'll discuss that with you if he has not already done that. So I'm requesting that the position be funded for beginning 2018, if not tomorrow. So I'll hand this out to you or just have you pass around. It's some of the stuff that I will talk to you a little bit about, but just so that you can have it. There's one, there's at least one for everybody in the Moore, just so that you have some of the information in actual form that I'm going to talk to you about. One of the documents is something that is nothing more prevalent than today where Ccert, which is members of basically cleanup, cleanup New York State police come for response to clandestine labs, who've spent far more hours today in Lewis County than they wanted to, who cleaned up two labs today. Three people were arrested on A2 felonies for having more than two ounces of methamphetamine, and we're still continuing investigation on the second lab. One of the things that you've received there is the total number of labs in two, over a period of four years with the increase showing in 2017. And you can see pretty much the strip where it goes. And in particular, if you look on the legend for 2017, you see the very, very dark spots where you see them highlighted. This Jefferson and Lewis County in particular. And you can see the trend from 2014 with pretty much a single dot in Lewis County to the darkest spots in 2017. And that's their response for both dump sites and actual labs. You'll see, and this just goes through September. This is from the clandestine laboratory activity of New York State from up through September 30th of 2017. And what they talk about on one of the pages that I've given you is they highlight the dense concentration of activity, activity within Jefferson, Lewis and Portland counties, specifically calling attention to the activity in and around Watertown, Lavelle and Lions Falls. And then they talk about Portland. The worst page is total clandestine incidences by county. You'll see that in 2017 to date, Jefferson County leads with 62, Lewis County is next in line with 41. And when you think about the per capita, that pretty much means we lead the state. The last piece of paper that I copied for you is a breakdown, now it probably goes back, not that it's changed significantly, but that probably goes back about eight, nine months, is most of the counties, the smaller sized counties, populations, what's the largest we have on there, about 70,000. And the breakdown of their positions of ADAs, the DA is not counted, because the general, there's no specific rule, but the general rule is that in order to function, you want to have about one ADA for a population of 10,000 people. So it's kind of a breakdown of, the county is on the left, the middle is how many they have, and then the population of their size county is on the right. At the bottom, you'll see, so for our county, we have one ADA for a population of approximately 27,000 people. We are the smallest county in terms of per ADA. The only county that would be different would be Hamilton, I always get them confused, who has one ADA for a population of 5,000 people. They do have a part-time DA. They are the only county in New York State that has a part-time DA. So with the exception of that, which is an exception based upon both the size of their county and the fact that they have a part-time ADA and a part-time DA, you'll see the breakdown at the bottom. The next largest breakdown is Yates County, which has one and a half ADAs for a population of 25,000, which means that it's one ADA for every 16,666. So we are at one at every 27,000. So that was about the nearest comparison that I can make. And then the rest are breakdowns in comparison, because I wanted to be able to give you a comparison to what we have compared to other remotely sizable counties throughout the state in order to show you what we have. I also tried to give a comparison of our current numbers. So what we did is go through, because we roll over in terms of prosecution, for instance, somebody might be arrested, for instance, now, and their case may not be fully prosecuted till sometime next year. So what we did in order to remain consistent was go back for every year and look at when a person was arrested, in January, they arrested January 1, and just look at the initial charge through December 31st and just count on felonies only. We didn't even try down misdemeanors because they've been possible, just to give you idea of numbers. As of November 16th, just to bring you up to date, when we did it, which was last week alone, we are in total felony number arrests of 125, which exceeds every other year for the full year by that point, felony arrests alone. Since that time, we've already had, well, four more arrests, one including a vehicular homicide, three A2 felony arrests, in addition to other investigations that I'm really not at liberty to talk to you much about. So we're talking probably in a week's time, 10 more felony situations that you've got two people to work on, in addition to the fact that we're dealing with the misdemeanors and violations and traffic tickets in this county. To say that the increase, I think when I last figured it out, was over 26% higher than, than just the previous year. The corner cases are total as of last week of week 47 at 54 cases. We have 11 confirmed overdoses with one still pending. I can direct a lot of this to the drug situation. In 2015, we had 21 drug-related felony arrests. Five of them were for marijuana, 11 of them were for meth from the original arrest. They may have been given an upgrade at grand jury or plea or something, but we just went with what an original arrest was. In 2016, we had 47. Marijuana was five, meth became 15. Last figured out, we were at 51 for 2017 with marijuana remaining fairly consistent at five, meth was 16. We had what just happened today for arrests, not investigations, in the last week, and we are already up at 12354 with meth being at 19.
So, Reenan, if I could interrupt you and ask you a question.
Yeah.
Do you have any information on how much your total caseload has ribbon, risen? In other words, has the focus shifted to drugs and away from something else? Or how much has your total workload increased because of this?
I guess I don't quite know how to answer it. It's probably shifted a little bit. Our burglary numbers, just because there's an investigation pending where some of them have not been charged, whereas one or two people have probably nine other burglaries that still have to be charged. So those numbers haven't been counted. So you want to add that, that's about nine to 10 more that have to be done. They sometimes shift cyclically. Our sex numbers are probably up a little bit, but they sometimes go in waves. I anticipate with the Child Advocacy Center, that's probably going to potentially, it doesn't necessarily mean that that increases, but the investigations can be given more time and attention, and sometimes that pursues people coming forward a little bit more. That's probably a fairly under-recorded crime. If what I anticipate happening, we now have two investigators with the Sheriff's Department, so that gives them more time and attention to be able to give time and attention to cases. Well, I can't speak for the New York State Police, nor do I intend to speak for the New York State Police. I will indicate that their numbers are highest, with the exception of one troop that is down a person. Their numbers in our troop are the highest for each individual investigator having more cases that they're investigating than any other location. So they're close to getting another investigator. That will increase our numbers.
My question is, on an annual basis, you must have number of cases...
Yes.
...that you have taken on and the number that have actually gone to court in a plea bargain. So how does this year compare, or how does, yeah, I guess we're not through the year.
I don't...
How does it compare to other years?
I don't divide those up, meaning I don't take down the numbers and say, what's the bar. Everything is, what I did was go through the numbers, just like I said, and I did for every year, we took who was arrested on a felony case. We didn't even count misdemeanors. The numbers that I just went over were felony arrests because we couldn't begin to count the number of misdemeanors. Because that's, we don't have either the resources, I suppose I could if you give me the resource to be able to count misdemeanors and violations. Because it's, we have a computer system, which we only got in, I think, 2010 or '12, that might be able to count them if we put it into the system. But we took felonies because we put it into a computer system that I can print off and then just go through and count, because each one is logged into a system. So I can go through and count from January 1 to keep it consistent in numbers. I went through from January 1 of each year to December 31st of each year and counted just the defendant, not all their charges, just the defendant, to get the same consistent number, to give you these numbers. And in, from January 1 of each year to December 31st of each year, who those people were who were arrested, and then put them into a category of like either a drug or a burglary or things like that, to kind of be a consistent category. And as of November of 16 of 2017, the number of people who've been arrested on felony level charges is higher than any other year, with the exception of two years for the entire year.
Does it take more time to process a felony than a misdemeanor?
Absolutely. And it takes more time to process A2 felony drug cases and sex cases and vehicular homicides than it does, say, most burglaries. So what we've seen with this trend with drug cases is that they're higher level felonies. We've had, I don't know, that in previous years, which is why I broke them down by the previous years of meth cases and drug cases, that in 2015 and before that, that's about the first time we started seeing meth cases. But now we're getting significantly more, and then we're getting more people in those houses. Today, we've got three A2 felonies. That's a lot more work and a lot more significant prosecution of the, A2 is the highest. You go level felony, A1 and A2. That's drug highest, and that's murder. Then you work down to Bs and Cs and Ds and Es. That's your felonies. So when you're getting A2s, you're getting significantly higher sentences, you're getting situations where people may not quote unquote plea bargain, or it's going to, you're going to go farther in the process of the criminal justice system than you would on possibly a grand larceny, where someone steals maybe a credit card or someone steals more than $1,000. You're going to get potentially more work on that. And in particular, on an A2 for a drug case or a sexual assault, if you do something to a child, there are sometimes A2s. Because you can't plea those by what's called secret code information, you have to present those to the grand jury. So no matter what, you have a greater workload. So the more of these I get, the more work that I have. So we are in a situation where we, we've always been busy. We've always been overwhelmed. We're in a, we're in a position where, I don't know how to explain it to you, beyond, beyond, beyond. Where not only are our numbers low to start with, meaning we have been always behind the eight ball with the number of people I have in my office statistically, we are one ADA for 27,000 people, which is realistically almost two ADA short. But not only that, we're almost at an increase of over 26 to 30% higher caseload than what we normally have been. And that's not going to stop. I don't, I'm pausing because he looks like he's asking a question.
No, that's all right, go ahead.
When you get this increased caseload, does your backlog increase? What, I mean...
Yeah, it slows.
So it takes longer to get up to trial?
No, I still have time limits that I have to deal with. I absolutely have time limits that I have to deal with. So what it just means is that it's, you just got to work longer and more and... I still have time limits that I have to deal with. Those time limits don't change. So it's significantly more disconcerting and scary to make sure that you don't drop the ball on A2 felonies and make the meth situation worse. We have a problem here that we have to deal with, and so you have to make sure that you are handling those things and not letting something slip through the cracks while new fires are coming in. And so that's how I describe it, is on my desk are fires, explosions, fires, things almost burned out, burning embers, things that are okay, and things that can, things that are not on fire. And then things that I'm hoping don't start a fight. I have piles, and I take care of those. And then when those explosions are the things that walk in my door every day. And then I hope I can get to the explosions and the burning piles before that next pile becomes a burning pile. That's how bad it is. And that's when you get two search warrants in a day. And I, I'm not here to explain how much you got to go through to get a search warrant or do, but that's two new things that brought in potentially, without going into a lot of detail, seven new cases in one day for two people, who really is one, because I've got one person who has to handle everything else. And that's not including everything else that happened in the last week in this county.
How many ADA's does St. Lawrence County have?
That I actually is probably a question that you might want to be checking in with the new DA. I think it's been a floating number, to be honest, last I...
You don't know?
I don't know, because I think they don't have as many as positions as they were temporarily entitled to. So I really don't know.
How about Jefferson County?
You would think I should know, because I know most of them. Jefferson, I think, is on the list.
I didn't see it.
Okay. I can, that answer I could get you by tomorrow. Let me think.
Don't worry about it.
I believe they have seven, seven or eight, but don't quote me for sure on it, because some have come and gone, and I, I used to know every single one of them, but I believe they have like seven or eight in Jefferson County. And I actually don't know for sure about St. Lawrence County because they have had quite a bit of turnover.
Yeah. Anyway.
Oh, don't go there.
You are, you are one prong of this situation. We, we obviously...
Well, the drug situation, but yes.
Let me finish, okay? My turn this time. We, you, you being the DA are one prong of this opio problem, opioid. The others being the sheriff... of this opio problem, opioid. The others being the sheriff, probation, public defender, and even DSS, actually, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, but you're, you're in here asking for another person, and I understand this, okay? I, I'm not against it. But wouldn't it be advisable for us to take a cohesive approach with everyone that is affected by this? Is, is probation not affected by what you do and, and this opioid, opioid situation? Would you, would you agree with that?
Yes. I would disagree with you, because ultimately, the end of prosecution may end up with people on probation. Yes.
And public defender would be affected. If you're prosecuting, somebody's gonna have to defend them, right?
Ultimately, if somebody's arrested, there's, ultimately has to be a defense attorney in, of some nature. Yes.
So I guess what I'm saying is, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I, I'm thinking that we need to take a more unified approach to this situation and see what everybody needs and do it once and do it right.
I don't disagree with you. What I'm telling you, though, is that my office is beyond that. I'm not telling you that there won't be repercussions in terms of the fact that there may not be other people who may have, thanks. I don't know, and I don't wanna speak for their offices. What I'm telling you is that we are behind the eight ball at this point in our office.
I understand that, and I don't disagree with that. But I, I, I'm just telling you my opinion on what does, I think this board should look at, is a unified cohesive approach.
And, and I don't disagree with you. What I'm telling you, that if, if their position is, then they can come here and be behind me saying, we also need people. They may be, you gotta remember that there isn't just one person in probation, and there's just not one investigator in, in one of those situations. And I'm not disagreeing that they probably are gonna end up needing our help. But I'm not here, and I'll stand behind them if they are. I, I'm not saying that. But I'm saying, we aren't, we have timeframes, we have to serve this community, and I am entrusted by this community and by my job title and by my ethical bound duties to keep on top of that which I am bound to-
Let me be clear. I'm a yes vote, okay?
I, ask your-
I'm not trying to argue with you about this, but I, I just want-
Ask Mr. King if I'm not like anything but persistent.
Persistent, I guess so. Geez, I don't wanna whoop against you. I know that.
Well, hopefully, just tell that to a lot of other people. I, I'm just saying, that's the thing. Is it a problem that we need to take a cohesive stance on a lot of things? Yes. It is a scary-
It is.
-world out there.
It is.
It is. And I have said, I am like Chicken Little, I am not Chicken Little saying the sky is falling. And I hate to be that person, because I have seen more in the last year and a half than I have ever wanted to see. And, and Mr. King will say, I come and I am always the horrible bearer of horrible news, and I repeat myself on a regular basis.
Well, he does do so.
Does, so does he?
He'll welcome you.
I know you do. I know you do. And I, I'll start bringing donuts and, and coffee, and maybe then I'll be even more favorably looked at. I know that I come never with good news and, and things of that nature, but I, I'm trying to take it one step at a time, but I am fully in agree with you that there needs to be a reevaluation of a lot of things, because it's, it's a horrible situation, and, uh, I wanna be proven wrong, that it, it goes away and then it gets better. And I'm really concerned that.
Well, in the short term, that's not gonna happen.
No. No.
But everything you said costs money.
I know. I know.
And that's the balance.
I, absolutely. But it's lives, and that's what's hard too.
Yep. I'm not gonna argue with you anymore.
Okay. I won't argue unless anybody has any questions. Okay. Thank you for your time very much.
Any further comments from the public regarding the local laws and budget? Privilege of the floor, any topic?
When do you want us to talk about the budget?
I'd be, uh-
What'd you say, Andrew?
I didn't see it on the list.
Good boy.
It's probably as good as any right now, Phil.
I, 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 fir- first off, I, I wanna, Ryan, you've done a good job on this budget. You, you and Patty. It, it really put you behind the eight ball with, with, uh, the, the medical, the insurance situation. And had, had that not been a factor, you would've had an easy budget. Or, um, much easier, I should say. I, so I, I applaud what you've done. You did what you had to do. But I don't agree with what you did in, in all cases. I, as I, and I, I'm only saying, I've told him this before.
We've been talking.
Yes. So I'm not talking out of school, but, um, my con, my, my biggest concern is, is the cut in contingency files. As, as I described to you earlier today, and LeAnn confirmed, you know, the opioid situation is a definite situation, and it's, and it's not going away anytime soon. And she needs another ADA, somebody might need another proba- you, the, the public defender is probably gonna ask for more money. The, the thing is, cutting the contingency so drastically gives us no, no hedge against a difficult situation, in my opinion. I, in, in my opinion, I, I believe, and Patty might not believe this with me, but I believe that we have committed to, we have not spent, but we've committed to, over three hundred thousand out of contingencies this year. And, and that's this year. That, that's, this has not been a exceptional year overly. So when we've only got two hundred thousand in there, that, that does, that, that doesn't help us if we've got a, if we've got a really tight budget, like we have a really tight budget. I think, I really think it would behoove us to find some money in, within the budget, and I know, I don't say cut the budget or add to the budget, but within the budget, if we could find, to get our contingency at least to four hundred thousand, I think it would be very appropriate to do that. Um, and I, I don't, Patty, knowing the numbers, you don't totally disagree with that statement, do you?
You'd probably love to answer that now, would you, Ryan?
We actually got some new information last week. Um, usually, the state of New York takes, um, a full year to get us our information about what our transfer payment to the hospital is going to be. They match whatever we put into the hospital and the nursing home. Typically, we don't get in that information until the following November. Well, this year, we got the information for next year, this November. So we got it last week. So we know that our transfer to the hospital, excuse me, to the nursing home-
That means the nursing home.
The nursing home, we had budgeted two point two million, is only going to be two million. So we do have two hundred thousand dollars that we didn't anticipate we were going to have when we put this budget together. Typically, like I said, we don't know what that number's going to be until November. Now, I would caution you by also adding that, we don't know what our hospital IGT share is going to be. We probably won't get that until November, like we normally get it. And that will probably be about where we budgeted. But as with the state, we don't always know exactly what they're going to, you know, put up for us to match. So there-
The majority of contingency, though.
So there is a, a little bit of cushion, I might wanna put it, but, um, not a lot. And also, that same two hundred thousand dollars, you know, um, you could look at as a he, as a hedge for the hospital IGT payment, which we don't know what that was gonna be. So a little cushion, yes, but-
Really cushion contingency. Well, well, yeah. I mean, I, that's great. And, and I would highly recommend that we move that two hundred thousand to contingency. And, geez, she's giving me the look over there. But, but I, you know, really, Pat, Patty has done, al- always done well projecting the, the unknown on the, on this IGT, you know? So I'm not really overly worried about the hospital one, myself, bec- because of the track record of Patty. So I don't, I don't feel uncomfortable a bit about moving that two hundred. Um, but I do have a couple of other things that concern me with the budget. And-
Phil, if I could just interrupt you for a second?
Yeah.
The other unknown is, we don't know exactly where sales tax is gonna come in yet either. So if that stays on the same projection that it's been on, there could be some additional money there also that could be put into contingency, right?
Are you talking about the end of twenty seventeen, or what we have budgeted for twenty eighteen?
Twenty seventeen.
End of twenty seventeen.
That goes into fund balance. That doesn't go into contingency. Contingency is different.
So that goes into fund balance, until we take a fund balance and put it into contingency? You could, but it doesn't really matter.
Right, right.
Why is it, and I'm just throwing out this, 'cause I disagree a little bit, lowering the fund balance up like we have. I mean, I think where you put the fund balance, it's gonna be tight, and we're gonna have to make decisions. But pretty much, if it wasn't funded, where budget time should be like we do in the past, somebody comes in and asks for us, it wasn't funded, budget time, and we fund it again. I think we ought to start holding our budgets that we put together. And if we hold our budgets, we don't need all this contingency. And there is a fund balance, there is, uh, unappropriated revenues that come in every year that lets us know what we could apply to taxes the following year. And also, that money that's coming in can be opened up after a certain date to cover stuff that we don't have any options.
Well, well, Jerry, one, one of the things I had on my list here to talk about was the E nine one one thing. Um-
It was part of that.
We took thirty thousand one hundred and eight dollars out of contingency for EF Johnson, wasn't it, to, to get them on call? Well, that came up, and we, you recommended we do that. We didn't stick with the budget.
And the reason it was is, and I don't, and I'm not being negative on this, we closed out the account and took out of our total radio money, four hundred and fifty thousand. We didn't have a choice. We gotta finish this project.
Well-
If that four fifty would've been left in there, we wouldn't have been coming back to contingency. And I'm not fighting for fault with anybody, but we lost four hundred and fifty thousand dollars when we closed out that account that we were budgeted to spend.
The point is, we needed that three, thirty thousand one hundred and eight dollars.
Yeah, but-
And we got it out of contingency.
But look what we got left this year.
Now, there, there's another one that I, that I had on my list that I'm concerned. Well, first off, when we did that thirty thousand, I was under the understanding that that was, that was gonna be ongoing. And I, I thought, I asked you about that, said, are we gonna do this every year? And you said, yes, it's gonna be a budget item. But it's not in the budget.
We will, well, I'm looking at it. It's, it'll be through PSAP and stuff. What happened is, that's an ongoing maintenance, so we'll be able to ship that back over once we get our project completed. Right now, because we didn't, uh, in part of the major overall picture, we had to do what they called an over, not an overlay, but interoperable on three tower sites. Um, when we got our money this year for us to qualify for the grant, we had to put three hundred and fifty thousand dollars towards this overlay, because that was part of the agreement that we had, is fire ass to complete radio system to security six million dollars. So once we get this out of the way, the three hundred and fifty, that should free up money, so what we get in those stifles each year. And I can't tell you what it's gonna be. It's supposedly, it'll be as close as it was last year, around five hundred and thirty-nine thousand. That'll allow us to use it for maintenance, repair and stuff. Uh, the thirty thousand that we got for EF Johnson, so we do the contract this year, should be taken out of there in the future.
But it's not in the budget.
It will be under Cheryl's side, the grant and stuff.
The thirty thousand isn't in here appropriate to spend.
We won't eat, we won't eat it again. It's a one-time shot.
Well, see, that's where I was confused, because I thought you said it was gonna be an annual-
It will be an annual thing, but it won't be of the budget. In other words, we have a source to pay for that ongoing. We just didn't have it this one time.
Well, let me go to a different one then. The jail, we had to add forty thousand dollars for boarding costs. It was not in the budget, but we had to add, add, I mean, it was an expense. We had to do it, right? So we, we couldn't necessarily hold them to the budget, because it was, it was a unforeseen thing evidently, when we did last year's budget. But my, my, what my, what worries me is that we increased it forty thousand dollars, but we only added five thousand in the line item in this year's eighteen budget.
Okay.
So that concerns me.
Yeah.
And, and that, and then there, there's other concerns, like the public defender. As we talked a little bit earlier, we had to add twenty thousand to them.
Right.
Probably a lot to do with the op- opioids. So all, all the, these, I'm just bringing these things up there, that-
I see what you're saying.
And when you say stick to the budget, we can't always stick to the budget. And, but that, these are kinda some of the things that, that I worry about with the, the little contingents.
We need contingency.
And I would get off myself.
No. We need some contingency for the unknown. I mean, you can't look, yeah, I know you do. Yeah. You just can't look at it, because we've got a really planned right now.
Some sources of money, correct me if I'm wrong, Ryan, as the year progresses, unappropriated revenues. When we get more revenue in, we've actually appropriated. That's unspoken for fund balance. And until we, if we know it's there, we can appropriate that into our budget to help us out. So we don't necessarily need all the contingency. And the problem is, I haven't had much contingency. It just, what I saw was the fact of, it's gonna put us potentially over the cap and stuff like this, if we have to raise it to get it in.
That's not what I suggested. I suggested, well, he just said we can move two hundred thousand from there. But the thing about the contingency is, what you argued for many years ago, is to have it in the contingency. Everybody's gotta vote on it to get it out of contingency. Instead of, and that's transparent.
Yeah.
That let everybody know what's going on, as opposed to what you just said about, well, we're gonna have extra revenues here or there, we could use that. But when you got it in contingency and the whole board's got a vote on it, then we're on record. And that's the way it ought to be. Transparent.
That amount of contingency that we had in there in the past was a lot more than we need.
A- absolutely. I agree with that.
So if we get down to a balance, whether it's two hundred thousand dollars more or what. But, you know, I don't, whatever way people wanna go, I don't disagree with it.
I, I don't disagree with what you just said. Eight hundred and seventy thousand is a whole lot of contingents. And we don't need that. We, the history tells us, we don't need that much. So, but we, history tells me, we gotta have at least four hundred. I'd be better with four fifty. But it's your budget.
Go ahead, Ryan.
On one.
No, you-
Go ahead, Ryan.
People's on track.
To, to respond to some of the things that Phil brought up, you have, you absolutely have point, Phil, that there's line items that we are not going to be able to know, you know, everything that's gonna happen throughout the year. And the two that you picked on are two great examples, because the, the jail outboarding was spiked by one case, one individual. So that, we can argue is not part of a larger trend, but it's still something that- So, that, we can argue is not part of a larger trend, but it's still something that hits our contingency. Same thing with the public defender, that was a billing, our spike this year, the twenty thousand dollars was a billing issue with some of the, um, conflict defenders.
Right.
So, it's not, so we added a little bit to those line items to account for the overall trend. But we're not jumping on, you know, increasing it fifty thousand or twenty thousand because of individual cases. We're trying to predict the trend, but we're never going to be perfect, we're not going to get the whole trend perfect, so we do need some contingency. The reason that I do feel comfortable with the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is because if you take out some of the items that we've decided to take out contingency this year and put those off the table, things that are not necessarily necessities, but rather things that people have come to request, then I think personally that we could get by with the two hundred and fifty thousand. I know you and I disagreed on that, but that's kind of where we, where I came to that conclusion. If you take away the outside agencies that have come for one-time shots or, um, grants or help us with this project. If you take those things away, then I think we could stay under the two hundred and fifty, and that was my theory.
I, 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 I got a pair of what Dick said, stuff comes up, you know, and really
More comfortable if it were four hundred and stuff.
Oh, of course, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
And Hudson River came up, my favorite.
You know, and There is two.
Yeah. And, and, and it's a, it's all down the line, we've got a whole bunch of things that came up and they, they just come up. The thousand dollars for the academy, that's a good thing to spend, you know, I mean, things come up.
Well, and we've got other, you know, sources of contingency or cushion as well that are built in, you know, we don't run everything razor thin. So, it's, there is a little bit of breathing.
But that's less transparent.
Yes.
And that, I guess, that's, that's what I'm saying, I like the transparency.
I don't know if it's not transparent, it's just not predictable till later in the year. I mean, we are projecting a cushion of X amount of dollars, which is in the budget as far as sales tax. But if we don't make that, we've got a little bit less, say fifty, I'm going to pick fifty thousand dollars or a hundred thousand that we've got a cushion there that we can, you know, not make that much and still keep our budget intact. And each year, I think we're getting closer and closer to the sales tax. But those cushions, and just me speaking, I believe in those because we, you were with us. Remember that year we hit, we predicted and we still had a cushion? But our sales tax tanked there that one quarter and we ended up, I forgot, at one point we were eight hundred thousand dollars and it worked its way out that last quarter, but
Well, we had a project here this year that had a hundred and fifty people working on it. Even though the project next year has got a hundred and fifty people working on it to keep that sales tax where it was. You put a hundred and fifty people in those counties for twelve months and they buy everything that they buy at the stores.
That, that was, that was a good corner of balance to claim that.
Exactly, yeah, we, we
Without, without that.
We had some, yeah, exactly.
And you know, I think people have had extra money to spend because gasoline prices have been down for the last year and a half. Not the greatest, but they've been down in fuel oils, roughly last year was two dollars cheaper than what it was before.
And the extra volume's made up a little bit for the
So, I think people may have a little bit more cash to spend on stuff, so they started getting stuff they needed as part of it. I don't know.
So, Ryan?
Yeah.
Help me with the process that if we don't pay for something out of contingency, what, if we use fund balance to do it?
So, say we have a expense that goes above and beyond a contingency, totally unexpected, um, the roof caves and, you know, whatever. In that case, you would have to make a resolution to appropriate additional fund balance. So, we'd be basically taking, tapping into our savings account.
Okay, so we do have to
Yeah, we put the extra fund balance, it's there to bring it back down to what we want to hold for acceptable levels.
In that way, we can use that cushion so that we can have access.
Say, say I think with, you know, we use the example of a large unexpected expense, but the same thing could be said for a large, uh, unexpected decline in revenue. Say we had, you know, a great depression or, you know, situation, sales tax rate, then you'd appropriate the share.
And we, we have nothing fund balance to meet the state requirement or what's it?
Well, do we have
Uh, right now, we're eleven point, eleven point four.
That's what, that's our max that we're allowed in.
Yeah.
Um, we really don't have a max, we're, we just set that.
Ten percent of our
Right.
That we're trying to
There's two in there, yeah, it's not all that. Five and six are good.
Hey? Regarding our public hearing, any final comments regarding the thirty eighteen budget, overriding the tax levy, or granting a waiver for conflict of interest?
For not overriding the tax law.
No, no, but this is a public hearing, we'll allow for that. So, before I
We don't really, we didn't even make a resolution.
No, as a precaution.
Well
Just, just a case.
You have to do it ahead.
Do it every year because it takes so long to, to move it forward in case we need it.
Okay, so that was your comment. Any, anybody else have any comments regarding the public hearing? Okay, um, now the public hearing is closed. Anything else for privilege in the floor? Presentation of limitations and notices, Jerry? Order of county officers and departments, Jerry? Any reports to any committees, uh?
Yes.
No one.
No.
Phil, you have something for taxation?
Yeah, I have something for IT, actually.
Okay.
Um, at our, at our meeting up in Harrisville, um, I neglected to mention something. And it, it was a good thing because Adam couldn't find his way up there, but anyway, I neglected to mention that, that our own Adam's there has set another American record on lifting, or was it a world record?
American.
In a different weight class, so now you've got two, right?
Right.
Way to go, Adam, there. And I also wanted to mention that Adam sent us an email earlier about the, the website. And you're ready to rock and roll, right?
Yeah, we set that out internally so everybody can look for mistakes within, uh, one departments and then, uh, what it is, it is left on, uh, moose county dot org.
And it's very user friendly.
We think so.
He'll teach you how to use it.
Probably have to. And that concludes my report, Mike.
Good report, Phil.
Thank you.
That's the shortest one in the bag.
Jerry, anything?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have, uh, a motion and I may have to read it a couple of times, it's, it's correct. Uh, motion to authorize Sheriff Carpenterelli to fill a part-time dispatcher due to resignation. Then with that, a full-time deputy sheriff sergeant due to the undersheriff's appointment. And a full-time deputy sheriff due to the promotion of deputy to sergeant. So, we're still, when it's all said and done, we're still short one road patrol. We did gain, there's still one, there is bump on our mark. I'll say that.
We've got a motion by Jerry and a second by Phil, discussion.
We just backed them because Yeah, and we kept one vacant.
One vacant.
Okay. Evidence, all in favor of Jerry's motion, say aye, opposed, carried.
Um, that's the only other thing we've got, we've got clarification back on our bid process for the overlay and interoperable channels. So, we'll be making a decision now, I've got even much to decide, much to mark now.
Okay, there, you have anything?
More reports, Jerry.
Greg?
Still have no reports.
Yeah.
Hospital's doing great right now, I'll have more in connection.
Andrea?
Um, I have a motion. A motion to authorize Director Kenny Ingo to fill the vacant public health plan position effective immediately.
We've got a motion motion by Andrea as a recipient.
Is that a backfill?
By Larry, discussion, go ahead, Nick.
Is that a backfill or a funded position?
Yes. There, there was a promotion.
That's what I thought, yeah.
And, well, there was a resignation, they did a promotion, put it in that, it's pretty much same thing.
Yeah, that's what I thought, I just wanted to ask.
Takes quite a little bit to figure them out at times, so.
Okay, all, any other comments? All in favor of the motion, say aye, opposed, carried. Andrea?
That's it, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I have no report at this meeting. Andrew, I'm Patty, Treasury reporter. Okay, if we go to resolutions then.
Did, did you go to the inner county meeting?
Yes, I did, yeah.
Was there anything about side by sides up there?
I, actually, uh, I, maybe from Isaac, give her a report and didn't approve the, uh, side by side. So, I told her to make sure it was a priority and she put it all down, said she'd go back and tell people like that, you know.
There is a, just to add on that, there is a legislative conference for Isaac, uh, January twenty eighth, twenty ninth, thirtieth, um, in Albany. Uh, I was thinking about going down for a day, so if anyone wants to join.
You said Jerry, my man?
I was, that's the regular nine six.
Twenty, it's actually twenty nine, thirtieth, thirtieth first, I got it wrong too.
At the, at the Desmond.
Yeah.
We did have a nice tour of current energy up there too. So, tremendous amount of penalty, bang in the day, it's held in writing intended.
So, did you ask the question on the side by side issue there? You asked that one, right? When Joe Griffo was in town last week, I happened to be with him on a different topic and it did come up. And they're still working on the side by side issue. I know we've heard this for three or four years now that it's getting closer, but, uh, he's seen more interest from different places now, so he was encouraged that there is some progress being made. I don't, I don't just need them in a few months, I think it's a miracle process right now.
Yes, we can move to resolutions, Terry?
Resolution four fifty five is adopting an otherwise given law number five, two thousand seventeen.
Moved by Larry, second by Jerry, discussion? Roll call, Terry?
Chairman?
Yes.
Okay, now this is to override the tax cap.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Dohoff?
Yes.
Fosset? Speedway?
Yep.
Gang?
I've got a question for clarification, why do we pass them somewhere under the tax gap? We could be rescinding.
I think after we pass the budget, we should, I'm not sure why we put it in this order.
We usually always rescind it at the end of the year, right? You live in a
Okay.
Until the budget is passed, the theory is any member of the board can make a motion to increase appropriations or change the tax rate. If that were to happen, we would want this in order. I don't think it will happen, but
Good explanation. Jerry, you're a yes?
Yeah.
Officer?
Yes.
On my hand?
Yes.
Absent table?
Yes.
We have introductory number law, law number five, um, replacing, amended and replacing the moose county.
I don't think there's a motion, so I guess there's more on it.
That is just announced, uh
Resolution four fifty six says fixing the date of the public hearing for that local law, third to seventy five.
Now, I'll take your motion, Dick.
Okay.
Moved by Dick, second by Jerry, discussion? All in favor of the resolution, say aye, opposed, carried.
I've written a waiver request for conflict of interest between Snellville Housing Vice Chairman and eligible rehabilitation grant recipient.
Moved by Phil, second by Larry, discussion? All in favor of the resolution, say aye, opposed, carried.
Transfer funds, elections.
Moved by Phil, second by Jerry, discussion? Number four fifty eight?
We have four fifty five.
A lot of, a lot of pages in between.
We have four fifty six, seven, seven fifty eight. Fifty eight is a take a, take a lot, yeah. I got a four fifty five, which has to do with superdenial.
I wonder if you have
Five is the tax gap.
I got different, I got different packages.
You have the old package, I think, too.
You got the old pack.
We got the old package.
Uh, yeah, I think the number sixteen package. I'm going to have gotten another package.
Yep, yep, that's fine. Everybody know I can mention numbers.
Four fifty eight, it's to transfer funds for elections, fifteen hundred.
How about you, Greg, have you got?
I got the other package.
Larry picked them up.
Thanks, all right.
So. Okay, I think we've got a motion for four fifty eight in a second.
Yeah, we do.
Everybody's up to speed, is there any discussion on four fifty eights?
What is this actually going to get them?
They're going to pay their, their EMS, electric machine, electronic
Monents, isn't it?
Yeah, in the, in the year that it, that it should be. Typically, they've been paying it in January.
Okay, this is just a, this isn't new machines or anything, this is
No.
Yeah, got you, thanks.
And they, they had extra money in special because they, there wasn't a primary.
There are three payments that came in, two will be on the next thing, the next one.
I thought I said went on machines, that's what you said.
Okay, any other questions? All in favor of the resolution, say aye, opposed, carried.
To reappoint David Becker as the superintendent of highways.
Moved by Phil, second by Larry, discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, carried.
To appoint office for the IGT director.
Moved by Andrea, second by Jerry, discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, carried.
Mending compensation plan with reference to probation.
Moved by Jerry, second by Andrea, discussion? All in favor, say aye, opposed, carried.
Mending compensation plan with reference to probation.
Moved by Andrea, second by Greg, discussion?
Is this additional, Jerry?
No, this is what happens when they've done their certain amount of time, they're bumped up the, the senior. And then filling in, with being bumped up right now, it's filling in for one that's not going to be here for a while.
Oh, okay.
That's why, that's confused, probably temporary.
Other questions? All in favor, say aye, opposed, carried. Opposed, carry.
Authorizing a print of two department probation and driven self-mitigation services.
Moved by Jerry, second by Andrea, discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
Authorizing amendment to extend contract for office of indigent legal services.
Moved by Larry, second by Jerry, discussion?
All the same numbers as last year.
There's no change. It's a five-year agreement, this is distribution.
Other questions? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
Appropriate funds, Sheriff's Department.
Moved by Jerry, second by Greg, discussion? All favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
Four sixty-six is adopting the budget for fiscal year two thousand eighteen.
I'd make the motion to table that.
Motion by.
So we can get a resolution on some of the issues we brought up.
Motion by Phil, second by someone else on the table, Andrea, discussion? When does this have to be, what's the last date this has to be approved again?
December thirty-first.
And December twentieth, but, you know, December five is the next meeting.
And December five, we could have, if Ryan was gonna make adjustments, we could have resolutions to adjust that.
Right, if there were gonna be any amendments to the budget, we could, they have to be extended by resolution.
So, that would, that would be appropriate to do it then, if you're gonna present any, anything. We ought to take into consideration what we've said.
Any, any other comments on cabling the resolution?
I got some, but I don't think you, you're not supposed to have that on the table motion, it's supposed to come up second vote, so.
Pardon me?
On a table motion like this, your motion to table, you get a second, we have to vote, you're not supposed to have discussion on a table motion.
Is that?
Right, John?
That's correct.
So.
Where did you learn that?
Uh. Robert's rule of order.
They're just a great one.
Yeah, they are. I'm just saying, it helps out, because it makes this go quicker.
Okay.
Didn't work.
All favor of cabling.
Move to strike all that comment.
All favor of cabling the resolution?
Not sure.
Say aye.
The table, that's all.
Yeah.
Roll call, Terry made that up.
Okay, roll call. And this is to table.
Yep.
And Shartrun?
No.
Dahlhoff?
No.
Bossett?
Ebsen.
Sorry, Hathaway?
Yes.
King?
No.
Calder?
No.
Marahan?
Yes.
Uh, Tabor?
No.
Six names. And three absent, so those are.
Okay, back to the resolution adopting the budget. Discussion, Dick?
I, my, I agree with Phil.
Uh, I'm sorry, I just, I'm sorry, Chairman.
We, we have, oh, we have to.
I'm, sorry, we never got the resolution on the floor yet, with the resolution on the floor.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay, probably put it on the floor before he changes.
No, still late, still late.
Oh. Take a jump in the.
One of us will second.
So.
All right, we got a motion, Larry, and a second by Jerry.
Thank you.
Now, discussion on the resolution. Yeah.
Yeah, I, I understand what Phil was saying about some resolutions being done. My feeling is that Patty, Ryan, the committees that deal with this, have worked on, on the budget to get it to this point, and no budget's ever perfect. And I believe what we heard tonight, we do have some contingency funds, and I think, unemotionally, over the next month or so, we can discuss some of what we heard tonight, and have time to discuss it and make an informed decision. I, I don't, I don't like to do it just quickly, I guess, so. I would say we pass this. We're not gonna go beyond what we've got in contingency, so we, we know what we've got there, we can work on it.
What, what did you just say, we're not gonna go beyond what we have, what?
I would hope that we aren't gonna change our budget beyond what we've got in contingency, because we don't wanna exceed the tax cap, and I think we're about at the top of the tax cap, because I understand the budget.
If we appropriate additional tax revenue.
Right, yeah, that's what, that's what I meant.
Well, but. What about adding to the contingency with the, with the funds that Brian is, Ryan is correct?
And that can be done, as I understand it, they, they will initially go into fund balance, and fund balance can come back out and do any contingency or whatever we decide to cover.
Could we do a resolution at the next meeting to, to do that, Dick? I mean, are, no, I'm asking you, would you agree to that?
Oh, yeah, yeah. That we, that we've got everything done, Phil, yeah. I mean, we, like you said, we've got some important decisions to be made, some of them, I think, can't be made, you know, one, still quite, I think we've gotta look at a broader spectrum of, uh. We had money, if we had done different things at the last meeting, where we could have maybe saved the taxpayers some money by getting some money from outside agencies, like we did with the backdoor, everything else, and we decided not to even do that, so, you know, I mean, I think, we gotta look for all the money we can, sort of, and bring it in here so that we don't put under a burden on the taxpayers. What I'm hearing is, Jefferson County and St. Lawrence County went into that action, and there, if there, any money comes out of it, they're gonna get some of it, or not. So, you know, I, and I think that money can go towards solving some of the DA's problems, for sure.
No, I would say, I understand what you're saying, but that to materialize in two thousand eighteen is, that's a mixed, you know.
No, I understand that, but it's right now, it's such, it's not gonna materialize at all, ever, that, that's. We have, we can.
Phil, to do what you're looking to do to add to that contingency fund, it's gonna have to be done by a resolution one way or another.
Right.
So, if we pass the budget tonight, basically, we're agreeing to the tax levy that's been proposed, and we're agreeing to put the money appropriated the way it's been proposed. After that, you've gotta have a resolution to switch it anyways.
Right.
Or you do a resolution to transfer it before we pass the budget, either way, you've gotta have a resolution, once the tentative budget has been put forth, so, that's, however you guys wanna proceed, if that's the way you want to proceed.
So, if you want to pull money from certain areas of the budget to lower the tax cap, or lower the tax rate?
You would have to do that before.
Before the budget. Because there is quite a bit of, there is quite a bit, I found a hundred and thirty-four thousand that could be cut, to lower the tax cap a little bit.
Not the tax cap. The tax rate.
Tax rate.
Yeah.
And what did the tax rate go, and, and, when was it last you?
Seven point two-three to seven point three-four.
So, it's about eleven dollars per hundred thousand dollars.
Eleven dollars. Wait, if we pass this budget, we can't change it.
We can't change it.
But you've got money in contingency.
Yeah.
I'm sure we can do what.
But that doesn't change the tax rate, though.
No.
You can, you can play with all the contingency money and violence fund and all you want, you're still not lowering the taxes to the resident.
But my, my feeling, and I know you disagree with it, is, with everything that's going on, the cost of living, the cost of services, payroll to our people.
So, we're unrealistic on our taxpayer, too.
Well, it's unrealistic to try to meet all those obligations, and the only thing we got is a service organization, we provide a service, so to reduce it to the taxpayer, start cutting services. I'm not ready to do that, just gently, so.
Now, there's some fat in there, there always is, you know it just as well as I do.
Other comments regarding the resolution? Okay, roll call, vote, Terry?
Okay, we're running, who's absent? Shartrun?
Yes.
Dahlhoff?
Yes.
Bossett is absent, Hathaway?
Yes.
King?
Yes, I can change my mind, Greg. What?
Calder?
No.
Marahan?
Yes.
Absent, Tabor?
Yes.
You know, I left the record show I wasn't bullheaded about it.
Okay. Just what I was thinking. And I need the lobby amount, then. Fifteen million, seven ninety-nine, nine thirty-nine. Guys, uh, resolution four sixty-seven is assessing and leveling the amount of tax out for our budget, which is fifteen million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, nine hundred thirty-nine.
Moved by Larry, second by Jerry, discussion? Roll call, Terry?
Shartrun?
Yes.
Dahlhoff?
Yes.
I have, uh, Hathaway?
Yes.
King?
Yes.
Calder?
No.
Marahan?
Yes.
Tabor?
Yes.
Four sixty-eight is to fix date of public hearing on addition to the ATD trail system.
Moved by Jerry, second by Larry, discussion? Yeah?
Larry, this. This is, um, where we accepted some of the high market trail, and we were, um, there, they're already been secret, so they were secret, and just re-accept them, so to speak, after the secret, and, uh, they've never been secret before, so, the trails were already.
But the secrets are all done now, I mean.
So, we've already voted to accept these, is that what you said there previously?
Yes.
Did I vote yes?
Wait, no, no, no. I was trying to.
We haven't accepted them yet as part of the ATD trail system, they were, I remember, villagers' trails, they're now county trails, as such, we're required to do seekers, so that's what we're doing, this is to set the public hearing to review the seeker and accept them into our trail system. So, you get one more chance to say no, Phil.
Generally speaking, generally speaking, how many miles does this add to our trip? Yeah, doesn't that be exactly?
That's probably a half a mile with these, with the, this grouping.
All six, all six of these? Well, there's, there's two different.
No, there's two different sets, both are, both are about a half mile.
Other candidates? All favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry.
Continuing public hearing now in addition to the ATD trail system.
Moved by Larry, second by Jerry, discussion? All favor of the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carry. Does anyone have any other business from before the meeting tonight? Motion to adjourn? Moved by Larry, second by Greg? All favor?
Looking at me for. Yeah, very.